That newspaper articles.
Gina, you ready? Roger, you ready? Public hearing called to order. Roll call, please.
Councilman Quainer, Councilman Foster, Councilman Harrell, Councilman Gann,
Here.
Matt Makler, Councilwoman Minnis.
Here.
Mayor Burton.
Here. The public hearing tonight is over three ordinances. Ordinance number 697, this is the fiscal year 2025-2026 budget. Also ordinance number 698 amending ordinance number 680, which is the zoning code of the city of Clinton. And ordinance number 699, this is the fiscal year 2024-2025 budget amendment. Anyone here would like to speak on those three ordinances? Speak now or forever hold your peace. Make motion to adjourn the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Public hearing is adjourned. Further meeting called to order. Roll call, please.
Councilman Quainer, Councilman Foster, Councilman Harrell, Councilman Gann, Councilman Hatmaker, Councilwoman Minnis.
Here.
Mayor Burton.
Here. Do you want to hear a motion for the approval of the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion of second. Any further discussion? I'd also like to add on the very end of resolutions. I'd like to add resolution number 850 in your approval. So let's vote on that to add resolution 850 to the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion of second, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes. Also have a motion of second for the approval of the agenda. Your motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion of second, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. This evening our prayer will be given by Vice Mayor Gann. Please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let's pray. Our Father, we come to thee with prayer in our hearts. We have a lot going on. Lot of things affecting our country and affecting our service people. A lot going on in all of our minds and hearts. We pray that you be with us, that you would calm our fears, that you would support us and give us the faith and the belief that we need during these times. We know there are many that in our country that are hurting right now. We know there are many having health problems. We thank you for all you do for our wonderful community. We pray that you continue to be with us. Help us to make the appropriate decisions to make this an even better place as we go forward. For it's in thy name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, Larry. Do we hear a motion for the review and approval of minutes of the previous meeting dated May 19, 2025?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion of second, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. At this time, we'll recognize any visitor or citizens? Anybody like to speak? Communications from the mayor. I do have a board appointment. This guy's been doing such a good job, I want to reappoint him. Here a motion to reappoint Jason Brown to the Innes County Tourism Council Board.
So moved.
Moved June 30, 2025, ending June 30, 2026.
So moved.
Have a motion here, second.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Thank you, Mayor.
The silence is the accolades that you do. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Also have a CUB appointment, but have not been able to get in touch with Mr. Clapp. And I'd like to talk to him, make sure he wants to do it for four more years. And I'll bring that up next meeting. Also, don't forget, best six days of summer coming up. July 14th to the 19th. And this is a good weather to get us ready for the fair. It's going to be hot.
Yep.
So that's all I have. Do you bring up anything else, Roger? Oh, JB, why don't you bring up, let's talk a little bit about the fireworks and everything. Just kind of give us an overview of that.
Fourth of July celebration will be on the 4th of July from 5:00 to 10:00.
Makes sense.
Fireworks will be at 9:45. Taylor's done a good job. She's put everything back together that we've had for probably 10, 15 years. Backyard bouncers, Little Ponrosa, the East Tennessee Championship Wrestling Back, the Axe Throw. And then Jason Hammack will have his sound machine down there, kind of playing music and it's that the other thing. Kind of it. Probably got more food than we've ever had. I think we've got 12, as of today, 12 food vendors. Wrestling's at 6 o'clock, the first wrestling show. The Wrestling Battle Royal is at 7 o'clock. And then, like I said, fireworks at 9:25.
And all this information's online?
Yes.
All right. Any question for JB? Thanks, JB. Community reports, city school board report, Ms. Johnson?
Good evening. A few updates from Clinton City Schools. We are finishing our summer school, four-week summer learning program this Friday. We have averaged, this has been probably our highest year in attendance since we implemented summer school. But we've been averaging daily about 127 pre-K to rising 7th grade students. So that has been definitely a success. And we thank all the teachers who have dedicated four weeks of their summer to provide this additional learning opportunity for students. Our test scores have arrived. They are embargoed until July the 7th. But we have received our achievement test scores and they look, we're very pleased. And always areas to celebrate, a few pockets of areas that we'll focus on for this next year. But overall, they appear to be some of the best that we have seen. So I look forward to sharing that with you hopefully soon. TVOS, which is our student growth, will not be available until mid-July. And so we kind of put those two together to create the full picture. But that is flowing in. A couple of capital project updates for this summer is the auditorium project is well underway. The sound panels have been put up, it's been painted, the ceiling excavation and renovation has happened. So all we're waiting on at this point is for the seats to be delivered. Those will be delivered on July the 7th. So we fully expect, unless there is a glitch of some kind, that we will be able to hold our back-to-school staff meeting in our brand-new auditorium this year. Shawn Humphries, our supervisor of maintenance of facilities, has done an amazing job overseeing that process. And then with our Clinton Elementary all-inclusive playground, things are happening there as well. The black fence has been put up around the playground. Joey Smith donated four large trees to help us with the landscaping. And the playground equipment is being delivered as we speak. So as soon as we can get all those pieces in and get them installed, that will be up and running. And I think I have let you all know this, but we have made the decision to actually dedicate that playground to Jim Sanderson, who served Clinton City Schools so well. So we've actually been talking with Shayla. When all of that gets said and done, we will do a ribbon breaking and officially dedicate the playground to Jim Sanderson. So summer's always a busy place around Clinton City Schools, but we're registering kids every day from 8 o'clock to 3 o'clock. Any questions for me?
Any questions for Kelly? Thanks, Kelly.
And we do have our final budget amendment with Scott Ray today.
I've been told I have two minutes, so I'll be brief. Budget amendment number five should be in your packets or you have access to it online. There, it's all said and done. There's four pages of line item changes in Excel that you have. It all boils down to $124,000 increase in the total budget expenditures as a result of that budget amendment. The main driver of that increase is the bonuses that will be paid out to certified teachers that work with children and our full-time staff. And that is actually being paid out June 30th. And that is from the state legislature. So we don't really have a choice on that other than to accept it. They're funding it, so why not pass it on through? Financial statements are in your board packet if you have any questions on that. Kelly alluded to the playground, which is a change in the facilities. Implicitly, you're approving that. It's a capital project that council really has to approve. But you implicitly have done that through budget amendments in the past. Same with the auditorium. So basically, the only thing for you to vote on is the budget amendment.
Here a motion to approve budget amendment number five.
So moved.
Second.
Motion of second, any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Quainer.
Yes.
Councilman Foster.
Yes.
Councilman Harrell, Councilman Gann.
Yes.
Councilman Hatmaker, Councilwoman Minnis.
Yes.
And Mayor Burton.
Yes, budget amendment number five passes. Any questions for Scott?
Did I get two minutes?
Close enough.
Thanks.
Clinton Regional Planning Commission report, Councilman Hatmaker is not present. Clinton Utilities Board report, Councilman Harrell is not present. Other board and committee reports, Shayla, that leaves you.
Thank you and good evening. We have a yard sign campaign that is coming up for underage drinking. So we are ordering 100 yard signs, just asking the community if they want to participate to either pick up those signs at the fair, at our fair booth, or to stop by our office and pick that up. Just wanting to get out a summer message of preventing underage drinking for our youth. We have a back-to-school bash in partnership with Ridgeview coming up on July 3rd. It will actually be at their climbing tower. There will be resources, free food, back-to-school supplies for our community, for Clinton Day and Oak Ridge, Anderson County as a whole. So want to invite the community out to participate in that. If you have a business or want to participate, please let us know. We are accepting tapers for free. So you can sign up. Our IOAD event, which is international overdose awareness, that will be on August 28th this year from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. at First Baptist Church Family Life Center again. We will be releasing 71 butterflies this year instead of 75. And so we are well on our way to zero, working hard every day to get there. But that was a really sweet event last year. Really excited that we get to do that again and celebrate with our community members. We will have free Texas Roadhouse again, so please come join us. And we just finished up with a Boys and Girls Club camp at both Anderson County and Oak Ridge locations with 98 students. Our summer theme was, I'd rather eat bugs than do drugs. And it was hilarious to see their little t-shirts on them with them all going, ew. So we had some really, really good conversations, good presentations from our staff, and really good activities for our kids at Boys and Girls Club. Any questions?
Any questions for Shayla?
Thank you.
Thank you for all you do. General government report, Mr. Houck.
Thank you, Mayor. Just, this was not on your report, just kind of FYI, as of this morning. The city of Clinton, Anderson County Board of Education and the Worthington family agreed upon a settlement of the lawsuit. Received the documents this afternoon, so we'll be getting signatures this week, getting it back to the court and filing for dismissal on that case. The Old National Guard Armory, East Tennessee Development have approved all of our documents. And we had a pre-construction meeting was held on Wednesday, June 18th. Based on the upcoming activities and scheduling, work should start on the site soon after the Anderson County Fair is completed this year with a notice of proceed issued for July 23rd, 2025. So hopefully by, they may go ahead and actually get some laydown stuff done prior to the fair. So we're working with them. We actually have a walk-through of the building tomorrow. South Charles, D.C. Boulevard at Mariner Point Drive traffic signal. Bids on the project was received on June 10th, 2025. After review and evaluation of the bids received, we would recommend awarding the bid to the low bidder, Progression Electric LLC in a total amount of $299,245.65. The project has an estimated completion time of 300 days for once contract is commenced. Reason being is kind of same reason we ran into with Delrun Boulevard. The cabinet that they manufacture to put all the guts of it in, they're telling us about 40 weeks. Now, some of the preliminary stuff will be done prior to that. And just as soon as we can get that in, they'll finish the installation. And actually, that came in, I think our estimate from our contractor on that or engineering firm was going to be between 450 and 480. So it came in well under budget. It's the second project we've bid here lately that came in much better than we anticipated.
Here a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Motion of second, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. It's good news.
Yeah, it is. Great news.
Defer to Chris for the finance.
The monthly financial report, we're 11 out of 12 months fully reported. Revenues are right in line where they should be. They're looking good. Expenditures, because of some, you know, capital expenditures that's been approved, were more than 100% of our original budget. But here in a moment, you're going to see a budget amendment that ties all that together. Happy to answer any specific questions you have on the, on the May report.
Any questions for Chris?
I'll jump to the local option sales tax report. Again, this previous month, remember, we run too much behind on this report. So we're 80% showing what we've had. We're down 1.3% from the same eight months of last year. But again, there were some attenuating circumstances earlier this year for that. But we did have a good month. We were almost 5% over the same month in the prior year. So I suspect we'll be more than 100% of our projected revenue on, on sales tax, even with the pullback the state did.
Have you, have you been able to take, put that, take that money out, the pullback money and put it back in? Kind of see more of an accurate number?
I haven't, I haven't done that. But I can tell you, it's, it's about 70 something thousand. So, well, I mean, it was, it was over, what was it, 260?
Two, yeah, around 260, 265.
70,000, I guess I was looking at 75 or so per month. But, yeah, so we'd had a banner year without that issue. But then again, I mean, we got to look at, if it was truly not earned and misreported, then we weren't doing it anyway. So it wasn't like a penalty that we paid. It was taxes we received in prior periods that weren't necessarily owed to us. But so. Any questions on the sales tax besides that? And then I'll have a budget amendment, and then of course, we've got the original budget too. So we'll take that up at appropriate time. Okay. Thank you, Chris. Thank you.
I've just got a couple of updates on some of the projects. I knew you would ask, but I went ahead and made me some notes. The TAP grant, which are downtown projects, streetscapes. Been a little slow the last couple of weeks. We had a couple of conflicts with water lines and storm drain lines that wasn't sure that was there. So we got that resolved and they got back to working. But here in the next couple of weeks, you will see them working with the merchants, actually hooking up new sewer lines, going into their buildings. So there'll be, will be some shutdown of their sewer. Also, they're planning on probably here in the next two to three weeks to start working on Main Street. And which we, they asked and we encouraged them if they wanted to work at night. So it'd be less impact on traffic. So that is a possibility. It hasn't been decided yet. So it's moving on pretty well, good shape. The bowling alley, JB tells me the equipment's been ordered. It was about a 10-week lead on getting the equipment.
Eight to 11.
Eight to 11, so that should put us mid, end of July, getting the equipment in and give them really a month to six weeks to install it. So we should be good there. The pool, we've had a lot happening up there. We've been, actually had some of our Public Works guys helping with the project, doing some of the landscaping. We got 15 pallets of sod coming, 6:00 a.m. Wednesday mornings, we'll be getting the sod down. We actually got water in it about a week and a half ago. They were actually up there today hooking up the pumps and filtration system. They're finishing the electrical on the splash pad. Kitchen equipment went in, started installation last Thursday. They were still up there working today, let's say kitchen concession equipment.
30 pallets.
30 pallets, JB says. You better get there early.
Be in your way.
Bill's helping, yeah.
Bill is helping. Me and RQB have heard, check him out then.
Got the fences probably 98% complete. They've got to come back, put some latches and stuff on that's required around a pool. So it's moving pretty good. You know, we still have, and we're actually doing a punch list with the architect and engineer in the morning and the contractors. We still have to, once we get complete, get Health Department inspection on everything. And we also have to get TDEC inspection and just to hopefully get ahead of the game. April Johnson, who's the Assistant Director of Recreation Services, used to be an employee with the city of Clinton. So she's going to come out and kind of do a pre-walkthrough next Tuesday at 11 o'clock to make sure if there's any issues, we can get them corrected now. So it's moving, we're hoping, hoping.
We got a date.
Don't have a date.
I thought he was hoping on the day. I was like, I'm going to rock it down.
That's what I was saying, what's the date?
Some of the, you know, I don't know how soon, the Health Department, I don't know how soon TDEC would give us a final. Once again, our goal is to get it open sometime or something. We're probably closer on the concession and the splash pad than we are the pool. Because we still had that 30-day window that we had to keep water in it before we could put chemicals in it. And we're about, even best case, we'd be about probably 16 days out from that.
But it is going to be saltwater.
It is, will be saltwater.
Yeah.
Yes.
It's just initial, you got to do that with chemicals, I guess.
Well, we've made a lot of improvement in the last couple of weeks. Everybody looks a whole lot better. It's starting to shape up. Appreciate all the work from Public Works too, JB and them. Good job.
We got shade features coming Monday. We actually, we went ahead and dug the footers for them. They'll be in Monday, JB?
Hope so, Ken.
Monday, he hopes so.
Any, any other questions for Roger? Roger, I was just thinking, is there any other lawsuits the city's involved with at this time now?
Say that again.
Are there any additional lawsuits that we're involved in right now?
The only one, we had the officer involved shooting and, and that's the only other one that we have right now. I think that's it.
Right. Anything else? Thanks, Roger. Under ordinances, resolutions, first reading of new ordinances, ordinance number 700. This is amending ordinance number 680, zoning code of the city of Clinton. Matt, would you like to kind of give us a summary of that?
Sure, sure, absolutely. So this particular ordinance is a section that affects, it's essentially a new section in the zoning ordinance in the section 5.14, the Gateway Overlay District. This is brought up by Planning Commission and others to consider Highway 25 and 61, all residential areas for the complete length of the city jurisdictional limits. Pretty much sets the design guidelines for new construction and substantial renovation for the commercial buildings along those corridors to improve their appearance as driving through. The whole point of the Gateway Overlay is to, to further enhance the viewability, the beauty of Clinton from those, from those arterial routes. And it looks like we're looking at preventing the installation of just plain metal buildings and requiring a 40% brick, stone, vinyl, wood, stucco finish as opposed to just a blank metal building. And so we're going to mix it up with various other building products to give it that visual appearance that we're looking to. Plus, it'll address some front storage that auto, like garden centers and auto parts, repair services, things like that tend to put their, their stock out front. There is some grandfathering provisions for the existing businesses. And there's, you know, exceptions as to how those grandfathering provisions apply and when they no longer apply. Plus, there's a planning commission review component to it. So anyone looking to build a new building along those, that corridor, this new Gateway Overlay District, will have to come to Planning Commission, not only, which they already have to do anyway, but not only for the purposes of planning, site plan and approval and all that, but for the visual Gateway Overlay District and the design standards that's written in it. And that's essentially the, the meat of the subject, if you will. That's, that's the intent.
Here a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Motion of second, any additional questions for Matt?
What's, what's the definition of substantial precision in construction?
Okay, so we took the same language FEMA uses. 50%, if the repair or, if the repair or the alteration meets or exceeds 50% of the fair market appraisal within six months, or if in the absence of a fair market, the assessed improvement value versus the, the cost of that repair or alteration. It's monetary, it's a monetary comparison to whether or not it applies or not.
You know, me being on Planning Commission, this has been revised five or six times. So I think, I think the commission, we probably talked to you when you were still there.
Yeah, when I was telling you.
That we, I think we certainly did our due diligence to, to kind of dissect this and come out with the best product that we, we can. Not to say it's perfect, but maybe if it's not, then we can continue to look at it. But I think it's a real good, real good start.
I'll, I'll second that. I know we've, when I was on Planning Commission, we debated and chewed this up a lot. And we've given and taken and, and trying to reach a solution on some of these things. And I think this is a, this is a great compilation of what we discussed. And I'm very much in favor of this.
Any other discussions or thoughts? Roll call, please.
Councilman Quainer.
Yes.
Councilman Foster.
Yes.
Councilman Harrell, Councilman Gann.
Yes.
Councilman Hatmaker, Councilwoman Minnis.
Yes.
And Mayor Burton.
Yes, ordinance number 700 passes on first of two readings. Under second and final reading of ordinances, ordinance number 697, this is fiscal year 2025-2026 budget. Here a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Motion of second, any further discussion? Again, Roger or Chris, would you like to give some, the highlights of this?
I can kind of just, some of the, you know, highlights. Of course, we had the equalization factor a couple of years ago that affected the budget by about 750, 750,000 lost revenue. So that was a big, big loss we had a couple of years ago that we hope to see back here in the upcoming years. One penny of this right now equals 40,638. The hotel motel tax, we up from 4%, or from 3% to 4%, we generated about an additional 90,000, we're estimating. Employee raises are, once again, this is the third year of our pay plan that we put into effect, will be 6% again this year across the board. And that, that, as I said last meeting, over the last three budget years, that increases every employee in the city by 20% of their salaries. And we're still paying 100% of their benefits. So it's, it's pretty, pretty important. We did lower the contribution for our TCRS to 4%, which remains 2.67 cent, which was recommended 2.67 cents. So we're still, we're still putting in more. And typically, we put in around six or seven, but we lowered that a little bit this year as a little tighter budget. Of course, we know next year we will be debt-free at some point and we'll have some excess revenue for some of these projects. Chris, anything else?
No. What you may know that wasn't maybe on their, the last, the first reading was, you now have our, our salary schedule at the end of this document as well as, as well as the capital outlay, project, the, the three-year capital outlay plan.
Great.
So.
And once again, we do not have our certified rate yet. And talking with the property assessor, he's estimating, this is not certified, so this could change by every means. But he's, he's estimating around 53 cents. So it'd be our, our tax weight would lower from 86 to around 53.
And we'll know that for sure when?
Sometime next month.
Okay.
Well, we should have it by the July meeting.
Yeah.
Because we'll have to set a certified rate then.
You know, only thing I'd recommend, you know, I guess we talked about a little bit, especially next year when we free up some money, start having more of a line item for paving because it's, it's coming back around again, that we need to start focusing on that more.
It has, which, and I know I've talked about this and you'll see it in some of the budgets, probably if we can, and a lot of it will depend on a couple of grants that we're still looking at this year. But, but I'd like to do some paving in the parks. We did, I think from the mid-'90s to around 2014, we did almost zero paving in the city. We did between, somewhere between five and six million in paving the last 10 years, which has paved a lot. I mean, we paved all of Westwood Estates three or four years ago. That's the first time we'd ever done a whole subdivision. We did, you know, some of the industrial roads last year, and that was over a million dollars. We did some of Mariner Point. And there's some still, we're, we're still using the TPO service to help us evaluate the roads and what's our next. And to be honest, I haven't looked at it in a couple of months. I couldn't tell you what was in line to be next. But I can tell you our walking trails and some of the areas in the park need some attention.
Anything else? Questions, thoughts? Roll call, please.
Councilman Quainer.
Yes.
Councilman Foster.
Yes.
Councilman Harrell, Councilman Gann.
Yes.
Councilman Hatmaker, Councilwoman Minnis.
Yes.
And Mayor Burton.
Yes, ordinance number 697 passes on the second of two readings. Ordinance number 698, this is amending ordinance six, this is amending ordinance number 680, zoning code of the city of Clinton. Here a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion of second, any discussion? Matt, again, do you want to, is this a little different than what we had before?
Yeah, well, it's, yes.
Yeah, well, it's, yes. So, this is basically two zoning changes.
You said yes kind of like sarcastically.
Well, yeah, no.
It's still 680, I didn't know.
We're not talking about gateway overlay, so it is different than the overlay.
All right.
Yeah, yep. Okay, so with that said, it's two items. It's only really two items, but four actual zoning sections are being changed. So, it's essentially the B4 district is allowing apartments in those districts, but not on the gateway corridor that we just talked about. It's usually one street over, so we're allowing by special exception apartment buildings, multifamily with five units or more, to be in the interstate business district. And that's essentially the first of the two items. And the second item is, of course, storage yards. We are treating them exactly the same, no matter whether they're in the industrial zone or in the B2, B3, and B4. So, a person could have a storage yard via special exception, once again, via Planning Commission, and they'll have to have design criteria, guidelines for them to exist, but this allows a path forward then to treat them, even though they're the same occupancy, being treated differently depending on its location. Now, no matter where they're located, they are treated the same. That's essentially what this one does.
Good. Any questions for Matt? Roll call, please.
Councilman Queener.
Yes.
Councilman Foster.
Yes.
Councilman Harold, Councilman Gann.
Yes.
Councilman Hatmaker, Councilwoman Minus.
Yes.
And Mayor Burton.
Yes. Ordinance number 698 passes on second and final reading. Ordinance number 699, this is fiscal year 2024, 2025 budget amendment. Here a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion is second. Any further discussion? You want to touch on that briefly?
Yeah, this summarizes the budget amendments that we've done up to this point in this fiscal year, including the school's budgets. You'll see that we've amended our revenues in the general fund 2.2 million, our expenditures 2.7, and our unassigned fund balance now sits at 8.6 million. Total fund balance is 11.9. If I could add, if you could also approve the fourth budget amendment, I guess I probably should have touched on that during my time a moment ago.
We'll do that under new business.
Okay, thank you. But I can answer any questions you may have for ordinance 699, amending the 24-25 budget.
Any questions for Chris? Thanks, Chris.
Thank you.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Queener.
Yes.
Councilman Foster.
Yes.
Councilman Harold, Councilman Gann.
Yes.
Councilman Hatmaker, Councilman White, Minus.
Yes.
And Mayor Burton.
Yes. Ordinance number 699 passes on second and final reading. Under resolutions, resolution number 849, this is the fiscal year 2026 nonprofit organizations appropriations. Here a motion for approval?
Seven.
Second.
Have a motion is second. Any further discussion? So, these are pretty much consistent from last year?
Yeah, I don't think any of them changed. They're exactly the same as last year's appropriations.
Okay. Any, any questions from council? Roll call, please.
Councilman Queener.
No.
Councilman Foster.
Yes.
Councilman Harold, Councilman Gann.
Yes.
Councilman Hatmaker, Councilwoman Minus.
Yes.
And Mayor Burton.
Yes. Resolution number 849 passes on first and final reading. Resolution 850, here a motion to approve?
Seven.
Second.
Have a motion is second. Any further discussion? I'd like for Vice Mayor Ginn to, to read this.
Resolution number 850, a resolution naming the City of Clinton's newly renovated J.C. Water Park in honor of City Manager Roger A. Houck. Whereas the City of Clinton is committed to recognizing individuals who have made outstanding and lasting contributions to the community, and whereas Roger Houck has served the City of Clinton with dedication and distinction since that 1987, and whereas during his 27 years as Recreation Director, Roger Houck played a vital role in enhancing the quality of life for residents through his commitment to parks and recreation programs, and whereas since becoming City Manager in 2010, Mr. Houck has continued to serve the citizens of Clinton with integrity, vision, and tireless leadership, and whereas Roger Houck's decades of public service have directly contributed to the development, maintenance, and improvement of the city's recreational facilities, including J.C. Park, and whereas the J.C. Water Park Swimming Pool and Splash Pad, a valuable community resource that has recently undergone significant renovation, stands as a testament to Mr. Houck's commitment to recreation and public service, and whereas it is fitting and proper to honor Roger Houck's legacy and express the city's gratitude by naming the newly renovated pool in his honor, now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Clinton that the newly renovated swimming pool at J.C. Park shall hereafter be known as the Roger A. Houck Water Park. Be it further resolved that appropriate signage be installed in the facility, and that this resolution be entered into the official records of the City of Clinton as a permanent expression of appreciation for Mr. Houck's outstanding service to this community.
I was wondering why I couldn't find it anywhere on the agenda. Thank you very much, and I do appreciate it. I mean, I, I've been here, just started my 39th year this month with the city, and, and I do love working here, and I do love working for the people, and, and once again, thank you very much.
You've done a great job. I want to thank Chris and, and Gail. This has been going on for, I can't believe it didn't get out. But it's been due last month, and there were some people missed, and I was like, well, I want to push it off, but I didn't know everybody already knew. So, Chris told me that, I already told everybody, so everybody did a, a good job. But certainly well, well deserved.
Thank you.
Well deserved. Roll call, please.
Councilman Queener.
Yes.
Councilman Foster.
Yes.
Councilman Harold, Councilman Gann.
Yes.
Councilman Hatmaker, Councilwoman Minus.
Yes.
Mayor Burton.
Yes. Resolution number 850 passes on first and final reading. Any old business, business before us? Under new business?
Budget amendment number four, final budget amendment for fiscal year 24-25. I'm asking approval to increase expenditures by $242,535, mainly for capital outlay items and, and some grant-related items to be paid for from increased revenues from grant, from the grants, a decrease to our unassigned fund balance, and an increase from to reserves.
Here a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Queener.
Yes.
Councilman Foster.
Yes.
Councilman Harold, Councilman Gann.
Yes.
Councilman Hatmaker, Councilwoman Minus.
Yes.
Mayor Burton.
Yes. Budget amendment number four passes. Any other new business? Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Please adjourn.